At 6:30, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the meeting. And the first thing we'll do will be the pledge of allegiance led by our student board member.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, a single motion will approve the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda items including the meeting agenda, the April fund balance statement, minutes of the April 17 regular meeting, updated substitution teacher list, payment of monthly bills excluding payments to Larry Benson, Cooper Lumber, and Carrie Stewart. Reorganization minutes as well, April 17. Also, the April 17 reorganization meeting minutes. Mark makes a motion of a second. Kenny seconds. All those in favor? Carrie's a 7-0. Next, we will approve the payment of bills to Larry Benson, Cooper Lumber, and Carrie Stewart. Mark makes a motion of a second. Troy, a second. All those in favor? The 4-0 with three extensions, strong, Stewart, and Witten. Next, we will go into communications or MSBA monthly board report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of May. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at budgeting challenges facing Missouri's public schools. While state funding for public education through the foundation formula has increased in recent years, there remains concern about the availability of state revenue to fund public education in future years due to tax cuts approved by the General Assembly. Former Deputy Commissioner of Education Dr. Ron Langford says a major budget challenge on the local level is having a reasonable expectation of available revenue from state and local sources.
There is an appropriation, and the General Assembly will appropriate, but they cannot distribute more than what they have. And so appropriation, there certainly, we should have a lot of gratitude for appropriation. But if revenue's not there going forward, then its ability to meet the appropriate level, we've seen that many times, that they couldn't meet that. So, yes, it's always something we should watch.
Langford adds, "State funding for school transportation has dropped dramatically over time."
If you look at the amount that was appropriated last year, and the amount that was spent, which was 85 million, you have to go back about 35 years before it fell to that level. But if you look at a school bus 30 years ago, the cost of one compared to now. So, what happens if you gain appropriated funds through the foundation formula, but the monies for transportation and the cost of transportation continue to go up, then you're really just, instead of funding transportation, you're funding transportation now through the foundation formula or through local tax increases.
State law sets a target of providing 75 percent of the cost of school transportation to local school districts. But right now, state funding is at about 30 percent, forcing local school districts to pick up a greater share of transportation funding. Langford discussed school funding issues during the recent Partners in Governance Conference in Columbia. MSBA was a co-sponsor of the event, along with the Missouri Municipal League, the Missouri Association of Counties, and the Truman School of Public Affairs at the University of Missouri. Registration is now open for the 2018 MSBA Leadership Summit, to be held June 2nd and 3rd at the Lake of the Ozarks. The theme of this year's event is accountability in leadership, and will feature a number of general session speakers and breakout sessions related to that theme. The Leadership Summit also includes recognition of board members achieving the various levels of certification through MSBA, along with the outstanding Boards of Education awards. The June Delegate Assembly also meets during the Leadership Summit, where MSBA state officers are elected. This year's state officer nominees for the coming year are Rhonda Gilstrap of the Blue Springs Board of Education for President-elect, and Linda Doherty of the NICSIA Board of Education for Vice President. Mike Pratt of the Gaskinade County R1 Board of Education will become the new president of MSBA at the conclusion of the Leadership Summit. He served as president-elect during the past year. By the way, Mike Pratt also was elected to a seat on the National School Boards Association's Board of Directors during the recent MSBA conference held in San Antonio. Video interviews with the candidates are posted on the MSBA website, in addition to registration information for the Leadership Summit. Nominations are now being accepted for MSBA's Legacy of Leadership Award. The Legacy of Leadership Awards are designed to honor current and former Missouri School Board members who have distinguished themselves through community service and advocacy for public education. Honorries are outstanding Missourians who have given countless hours for the betterment of their communities and to advocate for the students in our public schools. These awards are sponsored by Future Builders, the nonprofit foundation of the Missouri School Boards Association. The Carter D. Ward Excellence in Advocacy Award is designed to recognize and honor an individual board member who exhibits exemplary leadership skills in the area of public education advocacy. The award is named for former Missouri School Boards Association Executive Director Dr. Carter D. Ward, whose career epitomized effective advocacy for public education. The Paul Morris Community Service Award was established to recognize and honor an individual school board member from Missouri, past or present, who has shown a sincere and outstanding commitment to community service. That award is named in honor of Paul Morris, a past president of MSBA, who devoted countless hours to strengthening his community and improving its schools through his volunteer work. Applications for both awards are open until June 28th, and are posted on the Future Builders section of the MSBA website. Both awards will be presented at MSBA's annual conference this fall. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Next, we'll have our head of board spotlights.
Our spotlight for this month is our retirees. We have a couple of them with us today, but we have some wonderful people retiring from our district, and we honored them last week with the whole staff last Wednesday. But our retirees are Gail Davidson, Carol Owens, Teresa Stillings, Quinn Hire, who retired in March, Kathy Green, Patsy Morrison, and... Still missing. Oh, Charlotte Moore. Sorry. I was reading, and I wasn't finding your name, Charlotte. I wrote it down. And Charlotte Moore. So, if you guys had come up, we'd like to take your picture and give you a certificate, and thank you for everything that you have done for us. It's funny, we honored Keith last time.
Thank you. Thank you. She's all snapped.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you, ladies. Ladies, anything you'd like to say?
It's been fun, and the last two days have been great.
Well, I'd like to say that I have enjoyed working for the Avar Point School District, and it was never a job to me. It was a calling, and I really appreciated the way everybody's treated me, and I've really loved my job.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we'll have the principal and director reports. Start with Dr. Hall.
We start summer school on Monday. We've got over 232 kids enrolled. I believe we're close to 60 at kindergarten, which is the most ever since I've been here, so that's good news, but we're excited to get started.
Thank you. Next, middle school.
We finished our year with a math extravaganza for our kids in grades 3 through 8, which tested with our state math testing. Dr. Hall and Ann Leonard did a great job of helping plan that. We appreciate that. And then I wanted to thank our local Subway. They donated 86-inch Subway sandwiches for our kids that were on the A on a roller had perfect attendance. So, thank you.
Next, high school principal, Dr. Dash.
Our high school faculty and students were awarded last week from Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education a silver award for our school-wide positive behaviors program. The last two years, we've received a bronze, and we've moved up to a silver, and we're going to keep going for gold. Next week, we're starting summer school, and this year, Ava High School is offering online courses, not only for girl credit, but also for high school credit, and our students are really excited about that.
Special Service Director, Mrs. Swanson.
I just want to thank all my peer professionals for all they've done this year. They have worked really hard. We move them some frequently, depending on need, and they've just done a good job taking care of our kids this year.
Dr. Hall, you guys just got awarded today. I helped your...
Yes, that's right. I helped your generation.
Helped your generation, helped through the... Helped the Alliance.
Yep.
Silver award.
Silver award.
So, it's great. Well, they can be... Your kid's up.
So, Dr. Hall.
Okay. Couple things, and then I'll jump to some finance real quick. State Board of Education, still no change. We still don't have a State Board of Education. It's interesting. So, the governor has, in the last week, has tried to remove his nominations, because if you remember, we've talked, if they're not approved by the end of the Senate, which is tomorrow, they're banned from ever serving on the State Board of Education again if they're not confirmed. So, he has tried to pull them back for consideration. Well, Senator Rollins has blocked that. So, now there's a fight whether the Senate can actually not allow the governor to withhold them. I think the Senate can not allow the governor to, once he's nominated somebody, not pull them back, but I'm not sure how that's gonna work out. Any justice did come to the floor, but he was quickly pulled from consideration because it was very obvious that he was not gonna be confirmed. So, special session starts next week, so it could be interesting. All the maneuverings that's happening, the shell games that they're playing in Jeff City, it's an interesting time to watch the emails and listen to people that are up there. I am concerned, you know, this is today and tomorrow. Is it, we're really only concerned about one piece of legislation right now, the Senate Bill 949, and it's on the House, it came out of the Senate, it's in the House right now, and I don't, have you seen, did it come out late?
I've seen it.
I talked to Representative Roland. It's a very prescriptive reading intervention bill that requires every school district to use the same reading intervention strategy. It was written by the, the bill is sponsored and written by the company that actually sells the program. So, that concerns us.
Sounds like a conflict of interest.
It does, doesn't it? We are, obviously, Representative Roland is not gonna vote for that bill. He's very supportive of public school and local control, and not requiring, you know, one size does not fail to anybody. And I think we've, even this spring, I think we do a good job with our reading intervention, and I think we've made huge progress even this spring on some of the things that we were doing tonight, and by no means want to be told from Jeff City what we have to do for our kids here in there. That's really the only one I'm truly concerned about. State revenue update, the budget has been passed. It looks like a new, they are gonna fully fund the formula at 98 million additional dollars in the formula, and 10 million additional in transportation. But if you remember, they withheld transportation dollars in the fall, so at least they're bringing this back to the appropriation that was made last spring, so we should be back level. Go down, let me show this. Well, stay over here for a second. Go over it.
Go over. This way.
Yeah. Okay, so, so we are still hanging tight in April. I don't have May, so I won't get that till the end of the week. Comes on the 20th. We're still 329. I know that's in red, but that's in red for me. We're still 329 above budget, so we're still pretty comfortable where we are. Now, go to the bottom left. Okay. So, really, where we're at currently, this is what we are still owed from the state, in state dollars. So, Prop C, remember, that's 1 percent sales tax. We are still owed $84,461.49, based on the calculation. We look like we may hit that, it's gonna be close. We get about a $40,000 payment a month. I'm sorry. We get a $120,000 payment a month, a month on Prop C, and it varies a little bit, but we're averaging 105. We had a huge month in September, it's back-to-school dollars. So, we're gonna hit our Prop C, because we've still got two months. We're gonna be about $100,000 over, I would guess, maybe a little north of that, maybe 115 over on our Prop C revenue. Transportation revenue, we're not gonna hit. We're gonna be $9,000 short. That's from the withholding in the fall. We've talked about that every month, and they talked about that in the video. And that's just, that's just the way it is. We will fund it. If we were to receive, I did some quick thinking, if we were to receive 70 percent, like as the legislated guidance, we would receive close to $300,000 in transportation reimbursement. Instead of the 137 I budgeted, we're gonna receive 127. Is about the number that I've adjusted the budget to. In formula dollars, we've got 910 left to get to. I don't anticipate that big an issue at all. We track somewhere in the neighborhood of 413, 450. We're gonna hit that number, so I think we're pretty good in that, in that area. So, I'm pretty comfortable where we're ending the budget. I think we're gonna get to the silver number that we talked about last year. You know, we passed the deficit budget, but I think, hopefully, it's really hard to tell right now, because everything is winding up, but I think we're in fairly good shape at this point. Just a reminder, next month, we will be adopting the budget, so I would like to, I'm gonna schedule some budget workshop meetings for you. Remember, we can only have three at a time. We'll do that in my office. I'll send dates out for that, for you to sign up, if you wanna come in. Spend about an hour, hour and a half, however long you want to spend, talking about what next year's budget looks like. We'll go into some depth in that. Looking at the 6, June 18th, 19th, and 20th, three days to schedule, but that's up to you all. If you can come in on those days, I'll send an email out, and we can get those, get you signed up for those. Last thing, just a reminder that I think I've communicated with all of you, I will be on vacation from June 1st to June 10th, out of the country. My cellphone does not work, so you'll have to call Mr. Dalton if you have a question.
Can we expect a fish drag when you get back?
We don't bring any back. We try to eat them all over there. Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Just a couple things, wanna update you on, we've already talked a couple different times this year, some legislation goes into effect next year regarding Suicide Prevention and Awareness Program. We're gonna follow up meeting with all of our building counselors and principals, just as we look at what that's gonna be for us. There's some training involved there for teachers. As far as students, you know, it's really part of the mental health unit, some different things that the counselors and some of those classroom teachers are already doing, whether it's part of the health class, or, like I said, some activities counselor, the counselor's doing in the middle school. Something else we're trying to do with that, we're planning to try to coordinate with the MOC. They do a community health fair, so we're trying to coordinate with them, just be some resources there, some things we would share with parents at that time. The other thing, got an update in there, our title funding, it came in, up just a little bit, just over 1 percent. Moving around a little bit, a little less in Title 1 and Title 2, a little more in Title 4, but overall, pretty, pretty steady. Since I sent this out to you, we've got our information on our Perkins funding, which Perkins money is for our vocational programs, Fracs program, Ag, Business Department, Industrial Arts, and we've got our preliminary projections for that, and it's within $1,000 of what we had last year, so actually up just a little bit, so that's a positive, that money's staying steady. We're definitely telling them.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to our discussion and action items. First on the agenda is the Section 125 flexible benefit plan.
Our Section 125 flexible benefit plan, it really is, that's what it is, it's a benefit to employees. It allows them to pre-tax health insurance, their portion of the premium, whether it be dental insurance, whether it be a flex benefit plan. It reduces their income level, reduces what their tax liability is. So, if they're paying a premium out of their pocket, that comes off their, it's paid for before taxes are assessed, so it's a benefit to employees. So, we're required each year or two annually to renew that policy or that plan. So, I send a motion to vote.
So, we need a motion to approve and a vote to approve the Section 125 flexible benefit plan.
Make that motion.
Mr. Bligh makes a motion of a second. Mark, a second. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor? Carrie's a 7-0. Next, we have the J-Mark extension.
So, J-Mark currently works with John to support our servers and switches, and it is that time to renew that contract as well, so our contract's a little north of 3,000 a month. It's actually going down to 2824 per month moving forward. It's, how they charge, it's $8 an access point. We have 103 access points, so that's the wireless access points. It's $100 for firewall support. We have one firewall. It's $15 per switch. We have 30 switches. It's $225 per server. We have six servers, and it's $100 for a wireless controller, which we have one. So, that's how you come up with the $2,824 a month. So, anyway, I think we've had, we've had pretty good luck in when we had that big outage. That was the first person that John called. They got our switches here as quickly as they could get them here, and we're, and we got up as quick as we could've got back up. Not if we weren't up the same day, but...
This year with them has been much better than the previous years. Yeah, they've gotten better, they've had better support with us. I got a conference of theirs that I'm going to open for you tomorrow, so they've been much more pleasant to work with than last year.
We have some new account managers and some new people that are in charge of our account. We're happy moving forward. My recommendation would be to approve that, because we would need to hire more than John to support all of the stuff that we have.
And all the stuff we have.
That's gonna support all of our Chromebooks.
No, remember, we're adding money to help with that.
Well, I'm just saying that what this provides will...
This will help with that, our wireless controllers and, yeah. They're kind of the back end of the system, that nobody sees their stuff, what they do.
They monitor it for me, so I don't have to while I'm running around. So, a lot of times, when I get a call from them, I may already be working on the problem, but they may have an idea of what's causing it, and I want to get there, so it helps a lot of issues.
So, we need a motion and vote to approve the J-Mark annual extension. I'll make it. Michael makes a motion of a second. Kenny seconds. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor? Carrie's a 7-0. Next, Capital Project, Lawrence.
This is just a preliminary list of things that we're budgeting for next year, that I wanted just to bring your attention to, things that we plan on doing over the summer. This does not need approval today, but ceiling replacement in third grade hallway, we actually are starting on that tomorrow. They're gonna start tearing out the old one tomorrow, and John's gonna be behind them, pulling wires together, hanging them correctly, and then the new ceiling will go in below that, and it'll be a two-by-two ceiling instead of those old two-by-fours that sag. We're gonna remove the cafeteria floor, that is the old asbestos flooring, we're gonna remove that asbestos, and then replace it with new floor tile. We're gonna, we need to redo the gym floor. It has some standards that are bad, some bad wood in it, so we're gonna renovate that gym floor. We have money in there for the purchase of some real estate, demolition of real estate. I would like to try to expand Connie Dean's preschool, so we can expand our preschool offering. She can only hold 10 kids right now, and if we expand that, we can hold another six kids. So, we've got $8,000 budgeted to do that. Something we've been talking about for a long time is a bus service barn and a storage building, all in one. We've got money budgeted for that, and we need, and the last thing we need to do is work on our playgrounds at the elementary. Some of the old walls that hold the pea gravel in are starting to fall, so we need to go in and replace. We've done that in some areas. We built some playgrounds at some of our preschools, but we need to replace some of that old, I think it's six-by-six wood. It's just, it's old, it's rotten. So, you have any questions about that list? It does not need your approval.
Is it the high school gym or the middle gym?
High school gym.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll have the approval of high school.
This is a long-awaited topic, I think, since the first day I was here. We've talked about taking the high school one-to-one and taking the computers or the Chromebooks that are in the high school and moving to the middle school and elementary, so they'll have more access. Cameron has already bought a backpack to carry her Chromebook in. So, we received three bids. The low bid was from CDI, and it's for 475 Chromebooks for a price of $99,569.50. This is the new version of the Chromebook, not the older version. The bid from CDW, who we buy most of our stuff from, was a couple hundred dollars higher, but it was, or $150 higher, and then we got a bid from J-Mark that was about $14,000 higher. So, we're, John and I are recommending that we go with CDI for a price of $99,569.50 to purchase 475 Chromebooks for high school students.
So, need a motion to approve a purchase of high school Chromebooks from CDI.
Second. Kenny seconds. This will be available July 1st. Add an extra.
Any discussion?
Are we having any troubles for kids to tear another ones up, or not re下来的, or anything like that?
No, we've had, I mean, we have some screens. John, in this order are some extra screens and some extra keyboards for replacement.
Plus, I got an HP for, if I have kids who are running every hour, high school kids can actually get certified through HP work on this.
So, we'll be able, the warranty will be, we'll be able to do the warranty work here. We're having, not any more than I'm used to. You have some, but we don't have a tremendous amount.
So, the deal that we did earlier, where the high school, did you get to put some of that work on this?
Yeah.
Did it work again?
Yes, and we're actually building a room this summer for John, where he will actually have a repair shop in one of the computer labs that we're taking down.
So, high school kids?
Yeah, high school kids will be doing the warranty work.
So, repairing.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor? Carrie's a 7-0. That concludes our agenda for this month's meeting. Our next regular board meeting will be June 23rd, 2018, at 6:30 in this boardroom. Do you have a motion or a petition?
I think we've had a regional MSBA meeting since last meeting.
We had one in Houston. Yes, sir.
Can we get an update on that, on anything that happened?
Mr. Greglach?
Ms. Parson? Well, it was us, us three.
Yeah.
And I think that's the lowest I've ever seen.
And I think that's the lowest I've ever seen at the meeting, even attending, but it was a good meeting, and what is that guy's name, that is our MSBA update?
Brett Don.
Yeah, Brett Don, he was there, and it was, it was a good meeting.
I mean, was it new information?
No.
It was good. Ms. Parson, because she wasn't there. It was about school choice.
Lot of repeat of last year?
Um, a little different, they did a legislative update, which we bear in mind, that wasn't anything new. It was good, but it wasn't new stuff, Mr. Gregliff and I.
Couldn't go out of your acting.
Yeah, you did. We had several that coached our kids' team, that had to be adapted.
So we need a motion about to adjourn. Mark makes the motion of a second. Michael seconds, all those in favor? This seven oh.